Okay. Sorry about that, we're a little late. We finished last minute details. So I'm going to call us to order at six ten. And before we get started, I just want to mention that I'm going to add an agenda item, items two C, an action item, to direct the community engagement committee to bring a recommendation to the board about further work to consider. And when we get to that item, we can get a little more information about it. So, one other thing I want to say is today during the day, I saw some social media posts that led me to believe there may be members in our community that have misunderstood what this meeting is about tonight. So I just want to make it clear that tonight we're not deciding on an option or an avenue to go down. Tonight, we're going to go over the information from the twenty-fifth, the all-day retreat where we spent. We're going to review that. We're going to decide, you know, do we need any more information to look at these scenarios? Do we, are we going to direct the superintendent to go get on the way with some studies with some, you know, other thoughts in mind, the information that we need? And then, when we get the studies back, there'll be another phase of the community engagement where we'll be sharing that information out to our community and processing and deciding our next steps. So tonight is not a meeting where we're deciding which option we're going to do. We're talking through the work that was done the twenty-fifth, the work that's been done for months and months, and we're talking through that and trying to decide, you know, what we're doing next. So I just wanted to clear that up in case there are some voices out in the community that think something else is happening. That was not the intention of tonight's meeting. We're about to go to the period for public comment time, the time for public comment. But I want to try a little experiment tonight. I'll offer you an opportunity if you want to give some public comment now. But as we go through our discussion, I'll offer some little times after we've had some board discussion for a five-minute period of public comment. If you'd like to share your reflections, your thoughts, we'll capture them up there on the whiteboard and have them there to be thinking as we keep talking. So we'll have the five minutes, let you kind of speak up if you have something to say. And then we're going to move on back to our work. And I'll allow for another break to allow some comments after we've had a discussion, after you hear what we're thinking and considering. So is there any public comment at this time?
Hi, Megan LaRose from Bristol. I think there's a misconception about who actually makes the final decision. And I just wonder if you could clarify, when it actually comes time to make that decision, where does that exactly come from?
So are you talking about a decision as far as a closure? Is that what you're asking?
Sure. A closure or the decision to choose one of the five options, or whatever it might be. Who is it that actually is going to make that final choice? And where does that directly come from?
So we're going to get all that information. We're going to look at it again. All that information might lead us to say, hey, there might be a better option. We're going to be in conversation with the community again. I think ultimately, we're going to decide based on what the community is saying to us, based on the information we have.
So "we" is the board?
Yes.
These people.
And that piece. But is, in the event that there was a closure, that goes back to the town that houses the school. Any other comments? So I'm going to just keep moving along. We're going to head on to the discussion. But I just wanted to let you all know that Sue McCormick, who has been a facilitator with us through this all, is here in the crowd. And tonight, we've asked her to kind of be a helper to us if we get stuck, to offer, you know, us a way to keep moving, just sort of keep us in check if we're heading down the wrong way. We've asked for a little help with that. And so Sue's going to be here to lend us a hand if needed. So at this point, I think I can turn it over to Krista, and she'll give you a brief recap of what's happened so far. Okay?
Sure. Thanks, Don. So this is kind of just to remind us all of how we got to where we are tonight. And Don reflected on some of that already. And as most of us are aware from reading the news, the majority of the school districts in Vermont are facing significant financial challenges, primarily due to a steady decline in student enrollment over the past twenty or so years, which leads to a decline in revenue. And this is coupled with increases in fixed costs that we don't have a whole lot of control over, like health insurance. So this fall, we spent a lot of time out with the community, engaging with students and staff and members of all of the five towns. We identified core education values of our community and found a lot of alignment between those values and the strategic plan that the district has recently adopted. And we also had the opportunity to share a little bit more with the community about those financial challenges, to share some of the enrollment numbers and our budget issues. And to share that the school board is in this position right now of having to grapple with some hard decisions. How do we cut costs while also keeping the programs and services that we think our kids need and deserve? And so that's what led us to this possible reconfiguration of our facilities. On January twenty, so we did all this engagement work in the fall, and we were basing this on a timeline that the board had adopted, which included, the culmination of that feedback concluded with a retreat on January twenty-fifth. And there were school board members, district administrators, building principals, and some community members there. And we spent the full day reviewing the feedback gathered over the fall and using that lens to look more closely at some of these different scenarios. The goal being that we would be able to recommend to the board scenarios that we might decide to explore further. And we faced this challenge of how do we even really decide which scenarios to look at more closely without information, but how do we get information without knowing which scenarios we're looking at? And I would say, from my, in my view, we're still sort of in that place. But while we also looked at these different scenarios more in depth, we came up with a list of some essential questions that we knew that regardless of what we looked at, we wanted to be answered. So tonight, so at our board meeting in January twenty-eighth, which was after the retreat, we decided that we wanted to have a full meeting dedicated to that conversation, and that's why we're here tonight. The board is trying to move really slowly and transparently. We're trying our best to be deliberate in this process, but we also are feeling a lot of pressure. And we all have a different lens on this. But as a board, and I think as our district leaders, there is a lot of pressure to figure out some solutions. So we plan, as we have these conversations, to build in additional opportunities for community engagement. As Don said, there are no decisions being made on closing schools or reconfiguring schools. What we're trying to figure out is which options seem viable to learn more about, because that is a financial end-time investment that we would have to direct the superintendent to make. So I guess that's all I just wanted to say to frame the conversation. And again, thanks to everyone who's been along on this ride, and I think our work is really just beginning. So we appreciate your ongoing engagement and involvement.
Do we have copies coming? Is that one?
I do.
So you have the document online, but I just, I know some people don't have a device. So if you can just hang on for one minute while we get the paper copy.
Right. So that's the summary of the retreat. And that was shared out with board members and administrators and posted on Facebook. It will also be added to the community engagement webpage, on the MASC webpage.
So the first thing I want to do is... Just look at the four scenarios that were narrowed down on the twenty-fifth. So I have a question to think about as you look at them. Do we study them as presented, or do you see, or do you have something in mind as a modification that you think should be noted?
I wondered if it might be helpful just to briefly go over it.
Okay. All right. So scenario one.
This is basically just continuing the operation.
Right. Current configuration, it was, we called it the status quo on the twenty-fifth. But so current configuration, five elementary schools, one middle and high school, and central office facility in its current location. So that was one option.
Right.
The scenario two, school consolidation had two parts. So it was, or actually, it looks like three parts on here. One K-four school in Bristol, one five-twelve school in Bristol, central office facility in current location. Then scenario...
I think we were actually looking at two A or two B, not just straight.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yep. So two A, school consolidation, all right, disregard that one. Scenario two, A, school consolidation, two elementary schools, one pre-K and one grades three to five, or both K-five. One six-to-twelve middle school, central office facility in vacated elementary school in new space at Mount Ave or in current space. Scenario two B, school consolidation, two elementary schools, one pre-K to two, second grade, and one grades three to four, or both K-five. One middle school, six to eight at Bristol Elementary, one high school at Mount Ave, central office facility at Mount Ave. Then the fourth option from the twenty-fifth was option seven. Choice High School. That would be one K-eight school at Mount Ave. Nine to twelve students could choose any public high school to attend, central office facility at a vacated elementary school in new space at Mount Ave or in current space. So those are the scenarios we are, that we found alignment with at our twenty-fifth.
Allison.
Can I ask a clarifying question for option or scenario seven? Are we allowed to have choice for seventh and eighth grade, or is it only nine through twelve? What's the state rule on that?
So this sort of, so this kind of choice that we're talking about is a little different than the high school choice language that exists now. So right now, school choice is specifically for nine through twelve. I think as we're talking about what grades do we operate, we have some greater latitude. It would require a change in the Articles of Agreement, because the Articles of Agreement state that we operate grades K through twelve. So if we don't operate grades K through twelve, whatever that might be, that would require those to change.
I just want to make sure we don't go outside of state statute in terms of what we're allowed to offer choice on.
Well, that's part of the investigation, right? So if this is identified as something that is worth studying further, those are the kinds of things that need to get confirmed, that are acceptable, all that.
I just had a procedural question. Would it be helpful if you shared how we thought we walked through this?
Okay. Okay, sure. So my thought, our thought was that we look at the four together and see if there are any modifications or study as we go, have our discussion. I'll allow five minutes for the community to give comment. Then I'll come back and ask you if you want to make any modifications based on anything you heard. And then we'll proceed to go one by one through the scenarios and talk about if there are any additional benefits or any additional trade-offs that are not listed. And I've got a sheet to come around right here that has the information that was gleaned from all those papers on the twenty-fifth. And then, so we'll go back over benefits, trade-offs, again, go back to the public for a five-minute period, and then come back and review the questions that are in this packet here, the essential questions that were identified on the twenty-fifth, and see if we need to adjust any of those questions. And then talk about what kind of direction we're going to give based on the discussion and the back and forth. Let me, okay, so there's that. And then this is the worksheet of community values that was, I can share some of that one. That was, that we used on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So are there any modifications you want to suggest to the scenarios, or do you want to go with them as they are and work through the process? Allison.
I just wanted to say, for scenario one, there seems to be two to three more understandings as to what we're trying, and maybe we're going to work that out better tonight. But for me, what I understood from the initial conversation, discussion at the retreat, was we wanted to see how long, not in terms of how much time we have to keep it the way we have it, but maybe, but get a bottom-line figure as to how much it costs our district. Maybe it's the budget, I don't know, that we're voting on. Maybe that's how much it costs us to keep our five elementary, the one middle high school, and Central in its current location. Maybe that's what it costs. But I thought perhaps there might be a different way to analyze how much that cost was and to see if that, if what we were thinking was actually correct in terms of how much it would cost us to keep going forward the way we are, without making any changes. Kind of felt like that's what you were saying, at least at the beginning, Krista. And then kind of the timeframe came in and all of that, but just kind of a, this is how much it costs us. And maybe that is the budget that we're voting on. Maybe that's the simplest answer.
See?
So this scenario obviously has impacts on communities and educational values. But I was sort of looking at this also in the vein that Allison was discussing in terms of trying to define, sort of backing into the problem instead of working the problem from the ground up. And that's sort of an overall financial kind of nut that we have to crack. And what is, what's the, you know, in a business sense, what's the pro forma that we have to actually put in front of ourselves to meet from a financial standpoint that is going to have to be met by any of these scenarios? And it seems like this scenario was a good one to start with, looking at that, just because it's what we know today and what we can project fairly easily. And that might give us an understanding of, all right, this is a yardstick for what's going to happen if we don't do anything. What kind of a problem does that put in front of us financially? And if any of these other scenarios are scenarios that we want to investigate, how do they stack up against that? You know, if we're, just as a complete blind example, you know, if we're going to face a $10 million shortfall in five years, and we do one of these other exercises, and that manages to save us about the same amount of money as we would need to operate for another five years, is that worth the, you know, the breakup of the community, or the loss of the school, or the change in educational quality that it takes to do that exercise for the amount of financial benefit? That's kind of what my thought was behind the first scenario, was it's a good yardstick. It's a good way to at least build the problem from the top down, from a large financial block, you know, big picture budget. And then see if any of these other scenarios are able to stack up against it, you know, building them up from the bottom.
And to echo some of what you just said, I think we owe it to ourselves in this process and how sensitive it is and how important it is, as well as to our community, to really deep dive into our current situation and then weigh that against the other scenarios if we, you know, because with every, with every sacrifice is a cost that comes with it, whether it's like in the community and how it affects the community, but even just purely financial, you know, outfitting the schools for different purposes. And so I think it's interesting, you know, we need to really know where we are in scenario one in order to know where we are in the other scenarios. If that makes sense.
Scenario one and scenario seven, for that matter, I think needs to be subdivided. And it kind of goes along with the conversation that we're having on scenario one. I would, I would think that we need to have the status quo, or I've started calling it current state, from a lean perspective, manufacturing, where it is just what we're doing today and nothing changes, and how that escalates through the process and how we would have to deal with that. The other thing I heard underneath scenario one was basically to increase revenue, which has a lot of external considerations that are beyond this board's control. And then I think the other thing that I don't think specifically is talked about, we need to look at scenario one as used differently, if you will. How can we maximize utilization of the buildings, you know, blur the town lines and stuff, you know, those buildings are attended based on geography. Maybe, maybe there is some reutilization of buildings and, you know, classes are co-located, all that kind of stuff. So I see, I see scenario one to be crisp about it is, is what I'm hearing is there's three different subsections. There's one A, one B, one C, or one dot zero, one dot one, one dot two. And sort of similar to scenario seven, where we looked at that as school choice, but I also heard, particularly in the discussions, that there was also a scenario, well, maybe it's county choice as opposed to you going to go anywhere. Maybe it's regents, specifically regents. Maybe it's specifically another unified district that we would, would work with or co-locate with or absorb. And I suppose the other thing that was unspoken about is if we do, and those three subsets had different plays on what would be done with, at the elementary school level as well. And maybe it's worth thinking about with that seven, if we're going to outsource, not outsource, but if we're going to change how we operate the high school, does that afford us, how does that impact the elementary schools and what the changes needed at that level be as dramatic as, as if we tried to keep all things together like under two A and two B? So to, just to straighten it out of my mind, I came up with those sub-scenarios, if you will.
I'm trying to sit behind me so nudge me. Krista.
Can you, I, can you articulate your sub-scenarios again for me? I mean, I got the idea of, don't do anything different, that would be one lens for scenario one, but I didn't quite get with the, and then with seven, I got the pure choice or combined with another district. And then I got the idea that, you know, if you remove the high school out of the picture altogether, that changes maybe scenario one. But what, I'm not clear on what the other...
Okay, so one dot zero is current state status quo.
Yep.
One dot one is increased revenue. There's, there is a, there is a contingent here that thinks that we can attract people and students and do away with our issues by filling the schools back up.
Gotcha.
And as I mentioned, I think that's totally out of control of the board. And then one dot two would be, what are the things that we, and quite honestly, what do we need to look at to really squeeze out every possible situation that we need to consider or should be considering to keep everything operating as it is, to keep all the facilities operating as it is, you know? Whether that means you, like I said, blur the lines, and all of a sudden, there's people are going to schools based on geography or population. Maybe it's like underutilized schools, do in fact co-locate, and then that's going to use for other, another educational function, like Addison is being used, staff in Northwest. And there's probably other ones as well. But those, those types of things that can demonstrate that we've looked at every, turned over every stone, if you will, about keeping all the facilities in operation.
Thank you.
And then, and, all right, are you all set then?
I think so. I think it was mostly on scenario one news that I wasn't clear on.
To go along with that, I think even under status quo, just opening up choice and what effects that would have financially on the district, just all the way through all of the grids. That would be my modification.
To scenario seven?
I almost, I guess I'm not sure if it fits in this or outside of this, because it seems to me like that is something that could happen regardless of what scenario we're in. But I think it, there is a lot of information that we could possibly gather during this process about how that would affect our schools and our students. So it could be a modification to seven.
I'm just wondering that for any scenario, we would have to do some kind of a transportation study, correct, of how much that would cost? Because each of these, I'm assuming we're going to be looking at estimated cost for each one, right? So bus transportation studies would have to go with all of them, and they would all be possibly different. So some might be, a little some of them might be the same. So bus, so transportation, bus. Okay, thank you.
So I'm wondering, when you go out for a feasibility study, have you talked to any districts that have done it? And what kind of information are they seeing come back, or are they gathering?
We are taking a little different approach in that we're, I think, as I've understood other districts, there's been information gathered upfront to inform the process and the thinking about what's feasible. We're taking a slightly different approach in terms of engaging the community before that, as that information's been collected, so that we're, we're exploring options that we want to collect information on specifically to, to address some wonderings we're having about what we can do. So having said that, I think we're going to end up with some similar information in terms of what, what general condition are our facilities in? What is the functioning capacity of our schools? And what, what percentage of their capacity are they operating at? And possibly projecting into the future possible operating capacities? We can, we can project forward, thinking about Kevin's... We can, we can project forward, thinking about Kevin's, Kevin's modifications of one, which I sort of understood as continue using all of our buildings, perhaps in the same way, perhaps in a different way, and perhaps by gen, to continue using them all by generating revenue. So I sort of heard those three variations in there. And we can, we can work, we have some in-house capacity and we may need to get some, some support beyond what we have capacity for, to help really dial in some of those projections and, and get as precise information as we can. Those are the kinds of practical sort of data points that we might be able to bring in. And then on top of that, there are a lot of philosophical aspects to some decisions that we land on, that obviously there's not really concrete data that we're going to receive. There are pros and cons to which philosophies we choose to adhere to. And that's more internally for us to figure out, I think.
Hannah or Bella, do you have any thoughts coming to mind you want to share? You don't, you don't have to, I just want to give you an opportunity.
No, not right now. I got just consideration, like if you were to choose one of them, like consideration on like making sure you make a building that like accessible to all students, because they know like, I'm not going to be the only, I'm not going to be the only person, but that it's going to come through here. So like if you were to change things, then like making sure that goes into your decisions.
Good thought, thank you. Krista.
I think, I was going to expand on Hannah's point, which seems like an essential question kind of thing. Is it okay if I go mention that as a question, even though we're going to get to those later?
Sure.
So I think, you know, it would be great to know our facility capacity, but also what, what would it cost to truly upgrade our buildings to be accessible? And/or if we were to renovate to make a building universally designed, not just accessible, because it's really different to have a building that you put a ramp on to make accessible than it is to have a new building that maybe doesn't require. So I don't know that came up in our retreat as an essential question, but I imagine that some folks might, just that question.
Other questions or comments about modifications to the scenarios? Allison.
So in the scenario two, two, you don't talk about pre-K, you just say K through and then essentially K through 12, as far as I can tell. None of them have pre-K.
Yes, they are two A and two B.
Two A and two B. In the scenario packet. Okay, so that kind of changes the numbers then in terms, in terms of how many.
For that one.
If, because in the big scenario packet that we got at the retreat, the scenario twos didn't include pre-K, they just say K through. So if these now include pre-K, that changes the numbers. So we don't have those numbers and that includes the pre-K numbers. So that kind of changes if we're looking at, in the two scenario, scenario twos, where we could potentially flip things. I guess that's part of the feasibility investigation piece.
We actually house 20 pre-K kids?
Twenty.
So the, the pre-K number that we house in our buildings currently is very low. We have probably 140 pre-K students in total. 120 of the 140, more or less, are receiving services through private providers. So the pre-K numbers currently, not large, there's potential to expand. We've talked a little bit about that. There are some, you know, potential unintended consequences of bringing pre-K in-house. One being it could put partners out of business. Another being it costs us more to educate pre-K students in-house than it does to continue collaborating with partners.
Why is that, what is that price difference?
I don't know exactly what the price difference is, but effectively, so we, we as a school district, because money flows through our district to our private providers to support 10 hours a week, we are, are sort of credited point four six, I think, is the, is the figure, point four six of an equalized pupil for each of those 140 or so pre-K students. And if you figure our cost per pupil is, what is it? I don't even remember. Eighteen thousand?
And some change.
And some change, it's about eighteen thousand. We're getting a little less than nine thousand dollars credit for each of those pre-K kids. And the 10 hours a week that goes to our private providers is less than that, a little less than nine thousand dollars we get. So if we were to bring in those students and still get credited at point four six, the, the cost per student would be higher than what it is now and our credit would be the same. So it would effectively cost more money to bring those programs in-house.
Assuming they, they're full-time.
Right.
There's the weighted that point, that's the weighting system. Elizabeth.
I'm just trying to think back to the discussion at the retreat about scenario seven and I can't remember, did we have a modification that discussed keeping all of the elementary schools open, K through six, and then having school choice for middle school and high school? Because I know here it just says one, K through eight school, I just can't remember if that came up and if we kind of had that as a modification. Sorry.
I don't see it on here, but I, I would also like to see scenario one, keeping everything as status quo with moving the central office into one of the existing elementary schools. We haven't talked about that specific point.
That sounds like it's going to be considered in a lot of options. Is that something we can plug and play into several?
Yeah, that has been my thinking all along. Like I don't want where central office is located to drive our decision about what we do with our facilities. I think where central office is located fits into whichever scenario we think makes the most sense for kids.
But we should know the ground cost of doing that?
Right, and that was part of, I think for whatever gets studied, the question of where does it make the most sense for central office to land within whatever we're studying, I think is a part of that. I think, because I think what has been really clear throughout this is there's no, there's no interest in continuing for the long term to pay rent for a central office space. And there's, and so there's some urgency, some people have a desire for us to stop paying rent immediately and our lease is coming up soon. The challenge with that is there's, there's no way around a significant outfit cost to move central office anywhere else. And rather than spend that cost without having a long-range plan, that may end up being wasted money, to develop a long-range plan first and then invest the money into something that we think is more sustainable, makes more sense. And so to build that into this planning process, I think is the way to go and will fit in wherever it makes sense to fit in, given what's driving the bus here, which is out of the support base.
But I think to your point, that is, that's a pretty clear modification of scenario one's written statement right now, that we might want to modify.
Sarah.
I apologize if this is already coming, but I'm just going to clarify, I don't have one of the pages, but scenario seven is about not having a high school. Where is the Virgens part of that? Is that in scenario eight that's not on there or is that actually scenario seven? So I'm just clarifying that potential conversation, which seems timely, like the right time to have that conversation, now.
I believe that's seven.
It is seven.
Yeah.
It's just, because seven looks like it says, yeah, I guess so. So it's a hodgepodge of options within seven.
Wasn't seven kind of a combination?
I think seven was a combination because there was the idea of combining the middle or high school with other districts. And that's where we talked about Virgens. And then I think some of the conversation may have gone to, to a choice option, like to another district or to a, or depending on your geographic location, maybe that was even thrown out there.
And I, for me, thinking about scenario seven was, really the concept there was, what if we didn't operate a high school? One way to not operate a high school is for our high school students to go wherever they want. Another option is for our high school students to partner specifically with Virgens and that's where they go. Another could be it's county-wide, so they could choose Virgens or Middlebury. We could open it up beyond and identify specifically Virgens, Middlebury, CBU, or whatever districts are we sort of, are, you know, adjacent to. But the concept is the same in all three of those. What if we didn't operate a high school?
Well, what if all of them were all merged as one district, like Addison Northwest and Mountaine became one district? Like it seems like if we're having this conversation, that we should be having the bigger conversation and trying to reach our goals in as many ways as we can.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I want it on the table, I'm just being honest about it, so.
Yeah.
I think part of the, part of the high school kids going to Virgens discussion was potentially having their middle school kids come here as part of our middle school, so we both kind of help populate each other's buildings. I'm not sure that's really carried here.
Okay, I'm, I'm noticing the time and I don't want to cut off, but it sounds like what I've heard as far as modifications was the central office piece should be plugged in to any and all scenarios. That was one, one modification. There, there was talk about scenario one in specific sort of being the foundation, we need that information, but I'm, I'm not sure that's a modification or just a more detailed ask for information. Am I misunderstanding that or do you feel?
Yeah, I don't think other than Sarah's comment, we're really modifying the actual scenario itself. Kevin had some, some categories under, he wanted to be sure we were paying attention. That sounded like more of a modification than what I was talking about.
Did I miss one? Anyone catch another one? Was there another, I mean, we talked about middle school one place, Virgens another, county choice, all, all of that, but does that play out as they study?
Well, I, I think in scenario seven, not operating the school at all and sharing kids between middle school and high school or not with Virgens as an example, it seems like two different scenarios.
Agreed.
Even though it's, I think we sort of combined them for convenience of the media, but they seem to have two different kind of financial impacts potentially.
So.
Or maybe not, I don't know.
It is a curious one, you know, if, if, in that scenario as you were talking about it, where my mind was going, if it's the same square footage for students, let's say seven, 12, and it's the same number of students, seven, 12, what have we necessarily solved?
Right.
Doing that, I'm not sure. Maybe there's something, but.
I think there's a lot that you solve. I think you create a middle school and you create a high school and the opportunities that keep being kind of, we talked about program going down and suddenly you have a larger population that's feeding a nine through 12 program and you have a lot more opportunities and options for what happens in and out of the building. I don't know, I just, and how you operate as a middle school seems like you have more opportunity. So that would be, I think, you're building something better and bigger isn't, is an opportunity. That's what I look at as.
Yeah, it may not necessarily have financial impacts. It may be more global matter.
I think that's.
And Krista had brought up the point about essentially best practices for accessibility to be included in all of the feasibility studies, not just acceptable, but universal accessibility for everybody.
So it seems like some of these scenarios, we would be in the driver's seat for, and the ones we just talked about, it's a bigger discussion with other districts and it takes two to tango or three to tango or whatever. So that just seems germane to the discussion.
Part of the study.
Oh, 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 sorry, one other thing about that is that also Middlebury is an international bachelorette school, whatever you call it, bachelorette, thank you, it's late, right? But, and so, so there's an equity issue that if they have, they offer that education and Virgens and Mountaine don't, there's an equity issue, even if everyone agreed to do that, you can't probably send everyone to Middlebury and so there's just, there's equity issues there.
And for me, in terms of the, including the superintendent move in all of the feasibility scenarios that we look at, I would just like to request that people be very cognizant of that cost and not make it be a palace, but it needs to be comparable to whatever fixes we make to our actual schools. I've recently seen an outfit for an office that just made no sense. A group office that made absolutely no sense. And when we're talking about tight financial conditions and all of the challenges that we face, the renovation to the high school didn't go, the bond didn't go over well. And so if we start talking about outfit for superintendent to move into a space costing one to one and a half million dollars, that might not go over very well, if at all, just so that you're cognizant. And it's, it's nice to have the latest and greatest and everybody have their own individual office and all of that, but there are other ways to consolidate an office into a space that's fiscally responsible.
Okay, so moving the superintendent's office, oh, Steve.
I was just curious if we wanna talk a little bit about the difference between two A and two B?
What differences are you, in particular?
Well, just curious as to whether, whether that might be an opportunity to consolidate some of these options a little bit, or if there's strong feelings one way or the other, or.
Krista?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it might be good to spend a little time on that question of, like, a K eight option. I mean, it didn't seem like there was a whole lot of appetite. People's, the feedback we got seemed to indicate that a lot of folks felt a separate middle school was a good move for our future. And I think a lot of folks also didn't necessarily love the idea of a K eight school. So I wonder if we might eliminate an option that would have all of our Ks and our Eights together. Is that where you're getting at, Steve? Do we have that in there?
I just, there was quite a bit of discussion of both of those options, and we didn't seem to be able to eliminate either one of them, and maybe that's fine.
Oh, yeah, so six, twelve is Mount Ave.
Maybe we, we keep them, but I remember being personally in favor of two B only in that the middle school having a building of themselves seemed to solve some of the gymnasium issues particularly, but that's just one facet of the issue. It's not everything.
Alison?
So I did a quick number crunch in terms of the number of students. And we could do a K through eight at, well, I guess, pre-K through eight, at Mount Ave, because the highest number of students was nine hundred and seventy-nine at one point. That was our highest enrollment at Mount Ave. I understand that we'd have to do some different configurations, but, in terms of classrooms and things. But K through eight, all of the students for nineteen and twenty is eight ninety-six at the moment. So if we wanted to do a K through eight, it is feasible. I don't know if we were talking about knocking that off as an option or what, but just to say that it could be done. Putting all of our students in one school, K through eight, it, it could possibly work.
That, that, well, there's a K eight option in option seven, or scenario seven, and that's the one with the K choice. Krista?
I would move to strike the K through eight idea, because you just put the question up. So I would, not to move, but I would say that that seems, it seemed like, at, at all the discussions, that seemed like not one of the favorite ideas. So I would just, with the high school choice, we could do, still have other options. So I just.
Can we do a thumbs on that one?
So is that where we started, or have we moved to another option? I'm a little confused. Because we were looking at the twos, but now we've sort of moved into scenario seven, and I, that was the one with the K eight. The other, the other ones, the two options didn't have a K eight. So have we just moved?
We moved. Can we, can we just do a temperature check on, on what Krista just had brought up?
Yeah.
Can I offer one thing before the temperature check, though? The column right after the, so the column first to the left explains what the scenarios are. The very next column to the right are the number of groups that were interested in studying that on Saturday.
Yeah.
So that's some data that indicates what level of interest there is in studying the scenarios. I just wanna point to that as opposed to perceptual or anecdotal feelings about where people stand. Because I don't think we have any other data in terms of votes or tallies, other than this right here.
How many different groups were there? Four, eight?
I appreciate what you're saying, Patrick, but I'm not sure we can really look at those numbers to say that folks liked K through eight, because I think we were so meandering in our conversations. And I just, I would add to that number, all the other feedback that we got from the community. And, you know, we could probably pull it up and look at the numbers of comments people had about both not loving the idea of K through eight, which again, that, I may be wrong, that maybe there was a same number of people who didn't like that that did. But we could look at those numbers, and we could also look at the numbers of folks that advocated for a separate middle school. I would rather lean on, on that and the gauge of this group now, when we're focusing specifically on that question, than that column.
Just check with Hannah.
Sure.
Um, I think from a student's perspective, and I don't know if this is all kids' perspective, but I think from a student's perspective, like, I went to a K through six elementary school, and then I came here, and when I was in sixth grade, I felt like I was definitely ready to, like, move on. And I feel like adding a little bit more stat from a kid's perspective would, I don't know, I think you get kind of tired of it.
Yeah.
Kevin?
I can understand the concern, and, you know, the question seems to be, do we put everybody together, we block up two schools? But I think it's, I think we're way early in the conversation to take it off the table.
A lot of the discussion in our group was exactly what you said, Hannah, and how people talked about their kids who were really ready to move on after fifth grade. And a lot of discussion at, at both meetings, actually, that, of the groups that I was in, that was a major talking point, that people felt like moving sixth grade to middle school was actually a good thing for those students. And that, as you said, everyone was ready to move on after fifth grade, for the most part, anecdotally, and that was. So thank you for bringing that up, Hannah.
Yeah, and I think what keeps coming up at these meetings in these smaller groups that I've been a part of is that there's, there's those of us that grew up in different towns and different cities in public schools in which the population was large. And so when you look at our facilities and you look at the possibilities, there's a, you know, some of us are like, well, yeah, we can fit that many people in here. But then when you talk to the people that are from here and that have moved here intentionally, that's not what this community is about. We're not about trying to fit a model in, and like, some call it equity, and some call it, you know, financial responsibility. But I do think that we need to really pay attention to, to, to the other subset of values which are coming from our community, which I'm hearing loud and clear, which is just because we can, doesn't mean we should. And what I'm hearing from the students, and Hannah, and thank you for saying that and Krista for agreeing that, is that putting all the kids in one building, it might work in a public school in Pittsburgh, but I just, I don't see it working here.
Krista, you're here. Did you get it, Krista?
Well, I think it does seem to be some interest in scenario seven in looking at the last modification column about adding, you know, while we're not going to operate a high school, we would potentially operate more than just a K through eight school. Here it says three schools. That must have come from somebody.
Well.
Or some group.
I also feel like it's a really complicated issue, so if we were to have K through eight here, if it needs a renovation, I think part of that study would be that it would still need a renovation. And there are ways to separate out the, the groups, and, and it could, I mean, maybe the renovation would involve cutting out the middle and having it be two separate things, having it be two separate schools here. And the pool, I mean, all the kids having access to a pool, I, I know that it may not at all line up. And when these scenarios go back to the community, I wanna just give the most thorough information possible and the broadest options possible, so that people can think about what they want for their kids. And if that ends up not being it, you know, that's great. But we, I, I would not want to limit it to just one outlook.
I think coming back to Steve's point about the modification on scenario seven, what, one of the, part about the three schools, to me, that's effectively scenario two B, only instead of operating a nine, twelve building, it's high school choice.
Two C.
There you go.
Well, can we do it with all?
Two B, one.
Could the difference be doing it with all elementary schools remaining open and then having middle, high school choice? That, to me, would be the difference between two B and seven, if we do it with all remaining elementary schools.
Well, I was thinking about, specifically, there, there was a wondering about the question under possible modifications that said what three schools would be feasible, and wondering where that came from.
Yeah.
I think that stemmed from this concept of a model that operated three schools and a nine, twelve high school. So if the nine, twelve students weren't housed in MAUSD but were choiced out, then scenario two B shows how three schools could be used for the K eight students that we have, which would have a separate middle school and two elementary schools. Which I think is different than looking at different ways to keep all the schools open, all the elementary schools open and not operate a high school.
Maybe that's what seven wants to be. If seven wants to be, keep all five schools open and not operate the high school. And then two B could just have a subset that says, you know, it's two B or two B point one, that takes the high school out of the equation.
Alison?
So if we go back to the K through eight question and the three groups that were interested in it, you also look at the strategic goals supported. It says equity, and then SEI, EIL, community. And we, we had brought up the fact that ELP could be in one place for all of the students as opposed to at Beeman and Starksboro and Bristol and all of that. And there are ways to make a place not feel like eighth graders are with the kindergartners and the programming and everything. And another issue was if you kept Mount Ave and the wet lab spaces that we have, and the industrial arts, and all of the high, middle, high school spaces that we have, it provides more opportunities for kids in the younger grades to have access to those spaces as well. So I don't, I don't know if we're completely ready to throw out the K through eight scenario. To go a little deeper into Sarah's point, there are some people who moved here for classrooms of fourteen kids or a school of a hundred kids. But there are people who live here who can't afford that anymore. So I think we have to look at the options that we discussed on Saturday, the way that we brought them up. Because I think now that we're doing this, we're kind of possibly, I know I am, there are points that I'm forgetting about, some of the scenarios that we had discussed, that were up on all of those tables over there. And we came down to these four in this way, with specific points to them. And I would hate to throw out the K through eight possibility, knowing that we did put it down as an option, completely acknowledging what Hannah has said and what I've heard my own kids say, and other kids too. But I think there are other things we can look at in that kind of a scenario, if we decide to do that, to make it a better possibility than what we're just thinking about right now in this moment, with what we currently have versus what we could have.
I'm just thinking about the budget for studies, and is there anything we can rule out before we study it if we really don't think it's, it's a viable or enlightened option, I guess.
That's kind of why I was wondering if, if there was enough between two A and two B that were the same, or where there was more momentum on one or the other. Just streamline this a little bit, but if not, then that's fine.
Krista?
This is reminding me why we got into the modular conversation at the retreat.
Yep.
And I really don't know, Patrick, maybe you can shed light on what, how a feasibility process even works. In other words, do we have to have these? Or even if we bring forth scenarios, will we get enough information about the parts of them that we can play around? You know, it's like we, we like a scenario, but we like a part of it, or we wanna know more about a part of it. And so I'm just wondering if you have any, can, you know, help us with that kind of thing.
Maybe a little. So I've never been involved in a feasibility study. The Mount Ave feasibility study that was conducted for the renovation happened prior to my arrival. So I've, I've read feasibility studies, but I've never been a part of engaging in that work. However, as I imagine it, and this is mostly from sort of learning vicariously through others that I'm talking with that are engaged in this right now, I feel like there's a really good chance that whatever scenarios we think we want to know more about, that heads us down the path of learning more about what could be realistically. And we may very well end up selecting a scenario that's not on this list anywhere right now. I think it's ni, it's important to have some direction, and, and as the person who's gonna be working directly with our consultants, whomever they may be, to help engage with this, the more clarity I have on what we're trying to achieve and the information we're trying to gather, the, the better I can support that process. I also think potentially the more cost effective we can be in getting what we want out of it. And we're gonna get a lot of baseline information and maybe some specifics to what we're looking for. That will influence our thinking tremendously, I think.
Sarah?
I have really tried to look at this process as a way that we can bring people also in and not should be, not, like, actually to wanna live in this community. And to do that, I think we have to actually have something better. And so if we're just looking at trying to save money, that's fine, but that is not gonna get us something better. And so I think we really need to be evaluating what things are better and are a draw and are good educational, not just like practices, but the structures, the infrastructure that's in place, and like, how can we build it and they will come? And I don't wanna miss the opportunity by going about this just as far as like, how much a building costs. Like, I want, I think I want the information about, you know, why, why do we real, is a middle school really better? Like, number of transitions that kids are making at different points, going, you know, diversity in the population, the programs they can have, not getting, like, why, why are they going somewhere else? What are they getting from that? They're willing to drive, so the transportation thing, they have the means, and they're willing to drive somewhere else to get what that has. Why, what are they getting from there? So I really, I think we need that information, not just a building reno money. And I, I don't know, I don't, I work in a building where I feel like they built the structure around a program, and now that's there forever. And I, I, we need flexibility. We need to think about how, how is this something that can consistently, constantly evolve?
I couldn't agree more. I don't, I don't think it's in our best interest to simply try to do the same thing we're doing now at less cost. I also don't think we're in a position to be able to dream big and ignore financial reality. So for me, it's a both hand. We, we have to, and any administrator that, that's in the room that has worked with me for a little while knows, despite financial realities that, that we faced, we can't start from a place of what can we live without? We have to really set some goals for. We have to really set some goals for what is it we aspire to become and how do we achieve that in light of our financial realities? And I think that same approach is important here. What can we build that will be really exciting and great at a cost that is affordable? Because that's, that's a key piece to our end policy. And that's either, it's either cutting cost or it's increasing revenue or some combination of the two. There's really no, no other way about that.
Liz, I just feel really strongly that Sarah brought up the point that I, I think I'm trying to make is that even before, two years from now or whenever a change might happen, if there was option to have movement even minimally amongst our own district, that we, we might really get a message from our community. What if the outlying schools populate themselves? I, like, what if people shift out to the smaller schools? I don't know. I just, I think it says a lot when somebody makes a shift for their family and goes somewhere. And if we allow that to happen, that's, that's a way to get the information about what parents and students and families really need from their school. And what if they shifted in? I mean, that's, those are all the things that I don't know. But if we were allowed that to happen, we could see, see from that and learn from that in, in the time before we go to the community. I mean, if there, it could go all different ways. I don't know which way it would go. Maybe Bristol got more full. Maybe it, I mean, it, we could get a lot of information from that, I think.
Kevin.
I'm not sure if this is the right place, maybe we can talk about it later if it isn't. But what is, I'm, I'm interested in knowing the process of selecting consultants and then, for instance, with the Mount Ave bond vote, there was a building committee and all that kind of stuff. So I don't know. I, I'm getting the impression that we give some scenarios to administration and one day they pop, pop back with a solution or an intermediate step, I guess you could say. And we pass comment on that and they go back and have a solution. So are we as a board totally relying on the administration or are we involving ourselves with some sort of building committee? And if so, at what time and all that kind of stuff?
I think that's going to come in that other op, when we, that item C that we added where we say to the community engagement committee, come back with some recommendations and then they may come back to us and say, you know, we think you could be doing this, this and this, or, you know, here's some ideas we have for you, for you. And then that grows back through this board to do, to engage in some more work, I think. So Steve.
I was thinking there might be a way, Liz, to pick the information you're talking about without what you're doing. Because of the unintended consequences that we might not be able to predict in the short term and how that might affect us, we might be able to do a survey as part of the study to see if you could give, if your kid is anywhere today, where would you say? Just to see what kind of reaction he got.
Krista.
I, I think I heard Kevin's question maybe a little differently that, I think the engagement committee will be really important in helping to frame conversations once we have information. But I like the idea of, I do wonder about us saying, okay, here are the scenarios and then, and then we don't have any input into the studying of those. I mean, it, it seems like it would be helpful to have one or two board members as part of that ongoing work to know that we're hitting all those points. I don't know if that's what you were asking about, but.
In a sense, yeah.
I, I would be interested in seeing us.
I mean.
Have, have a little more involvement in the feasibility process.
And I would say it's more than helpful. It's, I think it would be necessary to capture. It's, it's just such a nuanced and dynamic kind of situation that to try and capture that as fully as possible as we're engaged in a very iterative process with whomever we're consulting with. Like, and because it wouldn't be a single sit down with whomever it is and say, so this is what we want to know. And they go and do something and they bring it back. Like it's, there's bound to be lots of back and forth as we try to understand what it is we're after and the kind of information we need. So it'd be great to have more people that have, that are really knowledgeable about the process we've been involved in to capture all the perspectives that have come through.
I want, I want to check in with Sue.
Because I've been listening to this conversation, what's been interesting to me is a lot of what I'm hearing is the addition of some really important questions that you want to have answers to. So for example, when Kevin's talking about scenario one, I didn't really hear what he had to say as modifications to that scenario, but it was rather, if we study this scenario, here are some really important things we want to look at. How might we increase revenue? How can we best utilize all the buildings? And then how do other scenarios kind of compare in terms of the financial implications? So I feel like in listening to the conversation, most of the scenarios seem like things the, the board is, is not questioning the kind of scenario itself, but more here are things we need to know, with one exception, which is around scenario seven. So for scenarios one, two A and two B, I didn't hear a lot of, I've heard questions, but not potential modifications. But around the scenario about possible high school choice, I heard a couple of potential modifications. So maybe, Donna, it would be helpful to see where the board has landed. And what I think I heard was one modification, which was to make sure that in addition, in addition to studying high school choice, also high school partnership potentials. And then the other, maybe scenario seven B I heard was, could we study the, a scenario of not operating a high school but continuing to operate the elementary schools? Is that right? So I just wonder if that is where the board, like if the board would agree that that's kind of where they landed on the scenarios that most of them look like you could go forward looking at those and then maybe make some adjustments to that.
It'd be worth adding to that. So wherever we land, presumably tonight, perhaps not tonight, in terms of how to move this forward, we're going to get some information. Upon receiving that information, we may come back as a board and you may say, actually, this is now how we want to go. Like it doesn't, nothing's going to be set in stone once we've reached out to work with someone and they've provided us with information. We can go back to that well as often as we need to, to land on what we think feels right to bring forth to the voters who may, depending on what the decision is, may ultimately be the ones that have to make that decision. We're, we're not necessarily committing forever irreversibly to anything tonight.
Sue, just a clarifying question. Have we landed on a, a number of scenarios that we need to pick? We're only moving ahead of two, we're only moving ahead of three?
We have ten right now.
And the reason I ask, just because I heard we kind of got stuck on the K through eight thing, was about sort of the balance for the board, trying to narrow this down a little bit, but also a matter of public perception about if we get too narrow and the scenarios seem too close, it could be perceived even if that's not the case, that we've sort of already made up our minds and we're just going to run down the numbers and get the details. And so even if we have some scenarios that we don't even seem to really like, we may not like it on the board, but there might be a lot of, there might be a cross section of folks out in the community who would love to hear that and go, yeah, you're right, I don't like that idea, that stinks, but thanks for running it down. So probably the balance between too many and too little.
Kevin.
And to, to just jump a little bit on the community, community input and that sort of thing. I mean, we've had great response with our engagement activities and whatnot and a lot of, a lot of enthusiastic comments and, and that sort of thing. But quite honestly, we're talking probably to maybe five percent of the electorate and we're still not reaching ninety-five percent of them. And I, I'm accused of being negative about that stuff. But I'm like, every morning my wife tells me I'm the glass half full guy, you know? But I'm, I'm, I, I, I've played around in public things on a few different boards now. And it's just like, you're, the likelihood of all of a sudden getting that other ninety-five percent out is slim to none. So we have to be very sensitive to what their perceptions are because they're not taking the time to come in here. So I, you know, it's, you're absolutely right. You don't want to make it so narrow that it looks like their mind's been made up and but have it a, a good width so that we can have some healthy inputs and discussions and whatnot. And this is probably, unless somebody sees somebody running up a tree for no reason at all, I mean, this is what we're talking about right now is probably adequate.
Okay. We have that big crap coming out. So, no, I like that.
It's a good time to pause.
It is a good time to pause. So Elizabeth has volunteered to, so I'll come back to the, to the community here for some comments if you want to give us some reflections. Elizabeth's going to capture them up there, so we're, we're looking at them as we keep talking. So.
It seems like it would be very expensive to have feasibility studies on things that we might be able to learn a little bit ourselves, like going, finding out if Regent's is even interesting or, I would hate stuff to go out to Regent's, like, we're planning to consolidate with you and they don't even know that, you know? Like, I think those are really important things to, I don't know. And I think it would be really expensive to spend the money, have a feasibility study about that and then it's just like, what are you talking about? We're fine over here at Regent's. Other, other things like that. That's why I really felt like questions would be good to, some of the questions would be good to figure out first before even looking at which ones, after the questions are answered. I can't remember my other ones now, but maybe I'll.
Does this capture you? I'm sorry, my, my, because I captured what you're, is answer more?
Yeah, I think ask some questions, yeah, that's it.
Sure.
I just think also that it'd be great to really get a detailed list before getting any, before picking these. There is just having a detailed list about what we really need to know. Kind of did that, that other bit, but I think keep going with that. Like some of the things that have even come up, you know, whether the cops to have universal etc. or, or different things like that. Yeah, lots of details before going to a feasibility thing on particular ones because if we're not going there, it's a lot of money to spend for a feasibility study on something and there's things that.
First of all, thank you for doing all this work. I do have a question with the high school choice and I'm wondering, what comes to my mind is a lot of driving for high school students, driving farther perhaps than they usually are for after-school events and just, I just keep thinking there's a lot of driving to Millbury, to Regent's. And I wonder if the feasibility, when the feasibility discussion for that option comes up, if part of the discussion could, or part of what they look into is the increase in driving and what that would look like for the environment and for student safety and what, what could we do perhaps for public transportation to try to offset that? Krista, member state her name. Can you just give your name for the minute?
Oh, sorry, Patty Schonheber.
Thank you.
Oh, guys, I have the worst, right? It doesn't have to be the worst, it's very good. Which is basically a lot of driving, like even after school events, easily going to look into environmental and student safety impact of the language, right? My name's just, just.
Well, it doesn't really have and I'm worried there's going to be a lot of comments.
Ian Elmason. For the, the discussion about the K through eight, can you, can the design of the building alleviate having all those ages together? Or is it, is it, is it a better situation to have separate buildings? In your, in people's experiences? I don't have that experience yet, so, you know, if it was, if K three was in this building, could it be redesigned then where you wouldn't have those kind of issues or is our separate buildings a better way to go?
I don't know if you want to try to capture all this, like, it's on my machine, I can send it to somebody.
Okay.
I, I've just been listening carefully and maybe like Sue, I've been keeping sort of track of the conversation in terms of what questions it raises because I think, I think what you may have done is added to your already amazing list of essential questions. So I just would like to read what I wrote and in case it's useful, I can send it to whoever we'd like to have. So these are the questions, they're not in any particular order. This is, the first one is about scenario one and the question is, what steps, it really picks up on what Kevin was saying about different versions of scenario one. What steps can our school district take? Can our school community take? Can the legislature take? And can other organizations take to ensure that scenario one is viable and great as long into the future as possible? The next question is, which of our towns, if any, have interest in exploring closing their elementary schools? I mean, there's a part of me that thinks if we, if there were a way to answer that question, I mean, well, of course, what Sarah says is really true, unless we show them a town, from what we've heard, there isn't much appetite for it. And like Sarah said, unless we show them something that would be better or that we think would be better than what they've got, it's hard to imagine people having, increasing their appetite for it. On the other hand, if we really knew that people weren't interested in exploring any options that we might present, that might, I mean, that does close, close the question in a, in a lot of ways. So there's that. The next one is, what are the advantages to kids and what are the advantages to a town for keeping all elementary schools in the towns where the kids reside? What are the advantages to kids and to our five towns of keeping our middle, high school in our five-town area? What are the advantage of maintaining small schools? Thinking about what Sarah said is around, just because we can do it, doesn't mean we should do it. And, and what does the research say about small schools? The Vermont waiting study that just came out actually has some, something to say about that in relation to the connection between small schools and the ability to eliminate achievement gaps based on a family's wealth. Another question, what steps can we take to refine our population projections? I think that if, we could possibly get some more, some more data that would enable us to refine those projections and it seems important to do that before we take too many big and expensive steps even around a feasibility study. What would, I'm just thinking about your question, what would it cost to make our buildings universally accessible? Where does it make the most sense for the superintendent's office to land in any scenario we explore? That seems to be a great piece to add to the essential questions. And I was also just thinking about what you said. If there is choice of. If there is choice of any kind, of any kind, elementary or high school, what would we need to do to ensure that there's actually equity in terms of which families are actually able financially to make choices? That's a huge issue. And if, and, and, and I've actually had the opportunity to study that question quite a bit in my undergraduate and graduate work, and there's much to learn about that, but different families have different ability to even think about choosing differently than what they've got because of their financial circumstances. And we really need to think about that before we open up the school choice in any way. So, that's what I've got so, so far. I'll keep typing.
I just feel like I have a place marker for you that you can use as a reminder for us.
Yes.
Floyd Davidson, I have a, I had a thought in, in looking at the CLAs over the last couple of years and how it's driving tax rates for us, but then I looked at CLAs through a different lens and thinking of it in terms of people moving, which creates demand, which drives price. So, if you look at the CLA as a reflection of where people want to live, the village is a hot market for properties for families. And I just think that in this conversation, we need to add an opportunity to look at where people want to live as well as how we want to drive the, the buildings themselves, what's best for kids. It's, it's just a, a small piece, but I think it's important to note that people are effectively voting with their feet when they move, to your point, and where is it they want to move? And we have a barometer. Moncton took a great big jump on the CLA, and Bristol took a great big jump on the CLA.
What is CLA?
A common level of appraisal, which is what's trying to equalize the tax rates across the states. So, so it reflects, it reflects to some degree, demand, how does that impact our thought process? That's all.
Last comment, Amy.
Interestingly enough, I just happened to learn that if you're a town that wants to do a reappraisal because your CLA is low and you'd like to get it up high so that your tax rate goes down, you've got about a year to wait now to get a reappraisal even started. So, that's a little problem that maybe your legislature could help with.
It's kind of a double-edged sword, too, once you get reappraised at the right market value than your other taxes.
Well, if the CLA is applied after that tax rate is set.
But if you increase the value of your property to wash, that's the whole idea behind the CLA.
It, it is, it is after the CLA is applied.
Great. Okay. So, now we'll come back. I feel like we've sort of touched on some benefits and, and trade-offs as we've gone along. So, I mean, unless somebody's got one that they specifically thought of as a benefit or a trade-off that they want to add now, speak up. Now's your chance. Hannah.
We're talking about a lot of school choice in high and middle school and then high school, have school choice in the, not in high school, have school choice. But with school choice, we were just thinking with the schools that are like part of school day, how do we make sure that every student gets what they need, like academically and socially and just like a cost of order? Because like some, one student might learn very differently from another student and be a better fit at like Regent's, and one might be better fit at Mount A, but if you don't operate like Mount A, or like it would be the same for any other school. So, like, how do we make sure that every student gets what they need, like across the board?
Thank you.
I might be something to add to the trade-offs under choice, just that, well, I think we brought this up at the last workshop, and that was when you do, we don't operate a high school, we have no real say over how they're taught. Do you have some?
Sarah.
I would love to know if the, I forget the money piece, and I can't, but try. How, if you could really have what you want, and I guess I'm really talking to the administration, what would be absolutely the best thing we could offer? And I don't know, you know, if you're saying, not looking at the buildings, or like if you could start from scratch and you had fourteen hundred, something like that, students total, K through twelve, what would you get to do? And I feel like that's a feasibility study that is, I don't want to say free because it's your time, but it's like pie in the sky, not looking at the building, here's what would be best for our district and our kids, and start with that piece of it, and then let's see how, what, how, if we can work with some of that. Like, we don't want to have them have five transitions from this school to this school to this school, or we don't want to have, like, I guess I really want administration opinion, and I don't know if that's in my, the feasibility study. Sorry, I don't want to, but I think it'd be cool.
Krista.
I would like to echo that. I've often wondered what a fully funded strategic plan looks like.
Yeah.
Because we have these really ambitious goals, but I'm pretty sure they're, they're limited in their achievability each year based on finances. And so, what does a fully funded SCL program look like? What does a fully funded equity program look like? You know, all of those pieces that we all know we value, what, what does that look like? I really think that's a great suggestion.
Well, I think it sounds like great activity.
I'd love to participate in it.
I'm a fan of doing big, so.
But I just, I'm like, could you work in, like, we, if we knew this is what we're striving for, then I think we would have a stronger way of being able to maneuver through these options. Like, this is why this option is better than this option as far, like, without the cost fees, but like, I think we need more pros and cons that are related to the education.
Well, I think also, when you do that, it's a little easier to try to tailor something that looks like all of these community values of debt listing. It's a, trying to fit some of these scenarios into that piece of paper, there's some tough work.
Sounds like a big job.
I do think, just from a process flow back, is very intriguing, and I like the idea, and it's two board members' thoughts right now, in terms of offering direction.
Three.
Four.
But that's, that's what I'm looking for. Is there, is this a board action, or is this thoughts by a couple of board members? I guess it's clarity, that would be helpful for me.
Can you give a temperature test, or a temperature read, on how everybody's, this is yes, this is you can live with it, and that's no way?
It looks that way.
I think it's a good educational exercise.
Make a note for an admin team agenda.
I did.
It's a good educational exercise and a good comparison.
The only reason I did thumbs this way is I also have an unsustainable job where I can never get everything done. So, I just feel like that's, you know, I mean, these guys are busy and...
So, you know how like a legal team has a set of people that help do some of their research, like you could say, thank you, hey, these are the goals we're looking into and we're really looking for, you know, some people to assist us with this kind of research?
And I think what I'm understanding is...
If you ask, you might get...
Forget any restrictions we have now. Forget how many buildings we do or don't have, forget how many dollars we do or don't have. We have thirteen hundred however many students?
Yeah.
What's the best thing we think we could do if we could build it from scratch? If we were building buildings and we didn't have to worry about dollars?
Not even building buildings, but just like the programs, the programs, the services, what you're doing.
But I, I guess to, to the point, there's a relationship.
As a curse.
Right? So, am I working with what we currently have, or are we working with, we're not, we're not assuming anything? We're building the ideal. I'm assuming we're building the ideal, we're forgetting all the things we feel constricted by currently.
Go for it.
Yep.
What could our district be? Sue.
The one, yeah, I just want to throw out there is that I think it's really important in thinking about that vision to make sure that the community's values that you heard about are kind of front and center. And then, the other thing I just want to say is that sometimes the expert view of what makes sense is different than kind of community wisdom. And so, you just have to be prepared that there can be some places where those two things may not line up exactly. And so, I think as long as you are, as long as you're incorporating the values that we heard in your thinking and are aware of that possibility, you know.
Kevin.
I, I totally understand what you're saying, and, and we've already talked about the community values as we're through, pretty much aligned with the strategic plan, but there again, if Patrick thinks too much about what the community's going to think, he's giving himself a constraint. So, yeah, it's a balance, but shouldn't get hung up on, right, is my caution.
Steve.
I really see it as kind of a, a learning exercise. I mean, I'm not sure there's anybody sitting here right now who thinks whatever Patrick comes up with is something you're just going to be able to execute. It's probably going to be a hard, hard thing to come up with, you know, the resources to do a lot of these scenarios, but it's just a whole different perspective on the problem. And I know when I'm working on something, I love to get different perspectives I haven't thought about. So, if there's a different perspective, a different angle, you usually can learn something from it. Maybe not the whole thing, but pieces and parts are helpful.
Allison. And I'd just like to point out to the strategic goals and our end policy, and then the revision that you did to the monitoring report in terms of talking about the academic outcomes of those with economic means versus those who don't have economic means, the free and reduced lunch kids. I don't know if race was a part of that, but there was, once you got more into that data, it became very clear where our supports were desperately needed and going to help those students and not just be, well, we need more AP classes. Well, that may not necessarily address seventy percent of the kids that need help, that need support. So, I, I think that new data that we have now is helping guide that in a, in a better fashion with more, I'm hoping, direction. So, I think coming up with what would be the best for our district is a good exercise, especially given the new data that we have that we haven't really seen in the past, but it's been brought forward this year. That was, that was very helpful and enlightening to see.
So, I said a process question, does that mean we're going to wait to deal with scenarios before we get this other information? Or is, are we just deflecting from the really hard stuff here to talk about something that's really, you know, nice to think about? But I feel like in the business I'm in, sometimes that happens when you're talking about something difficult. So, I was having a very same thought, thinking, yes, it is nice to come at it from another perspective, but are we just avoiding the hard work, that the hard choice or the, the hard part that has to be where we take a step to, even to study these scenarios means we're going to have to get more information and have to keep working on this hard stuff? I, I had that feeling, like, are we just finding ways to avoid what we don't really want to go, the road we don't want to go down? Kevin.
Oh, I, I wanted to, I, I think what Patrick's vision is comes along with the whole thing, you know? It's not that we are, we should be, or I'm hoping we're not, thinking that we're going to get that and then chew on these somewhere. So, I think it, I think it goes in step, clarifies the process.
Andy, I'm seeing you nod your head, I want to give you an opportunity.
No, that's what I was thinking too. I was thinking the same thing.
Allison.
I think if Patrick and his administrative team do that, initiate, or however they, if they do that work, it helps guide us in determining which, how we configure things. Would it, does it make sense to have a K through eight based on what the, the best practices and that kind of thing would be? Something that Sarah had said, she had said something about doing the best that we can and having that information guide what we want to do. Because if we don't know what we want to do, then why are we even doing this? You know, if we're, we know we're trying to reduce costs, okay, yeah, but if we also go at it from Patrick's, we want what's best for kids, and I'd say that's everybody here and in our community, then we have to know what that best for kids is, and we do have that from the community values that we've gotten and have been outlined, which align with the strategic plan. So, I think if we have a more concrete vision, maybe, of what you're thinking about, that might help guide however we decide to move into whatever facilities. It doesn't have to be, you know, a massive study, but I'm sure you already have ideas and you're, you have thoughts about what you would really like to do if you could without the constraints that you do have.
So, I think at the last meeting, we did talk about that part of the feasibility study is getting the academic information or what are best practices and what works. So, we talked about that last time, and that that would be part of the scenarios of saying, if we set up Bristol Elementary School to be a middle school, you know, you need to know there are different things that are necessary in a middle school that aren't in the elementary school, so that would affect the building, but the programming would affect the building, and these guys are the ones that determine the programming and have the information about that. So, I think we had talked about that last time, that that being a part of it. So, it seems like these could be parallel things occurring at the same time, because in some ways, it's, the question you guys are asking is a little larger than maybe what we talked about at the meeting, but, but similar.
Steve.
Yeah, this is echoing everything, which is, this seems to look a little bit more at the intangibles outside of financials and bricks and mortar. Also touching base on how does your, your strategic educational plan fit in with a scenario that, you know, if you were unconstrained with facilities, not that you ignore them, but it's a great venue to stick for the intangibles that we're not so familiar with.
Kevin.
Do we, do we need to make a motion or something?
We will, if we just wait. I'd like Krista to be back in the room since she's been an integral part of that, so if we can just, I don't know... So if we can just, I don't know if anyone else has any other comments, but that's what we're coming to, is some sort of direction for administration about how to proceed.
Sure.
Patrick, I'm thinking about what you're being asked to do and then I'm thinking about all the work that's happened so far. And my question, this is probably a leading question, but I'll ask it. I wonder if you can imagine doing this visioning work and tying it back to these essential questions and scenarios in a way that can help possibly provide a framework for moving forward to the next step.
While you're thinking, I was thinking almost the exact same thing. Thank you very much. Just to have a little bit more of a frame, because I've been in education twenty-six years. I've built the Katrina School for Experiential Learning a million times. My backyard, right across the Hogback Bridge, with a little Echo Museum and a Shelburne Farms, all on one campus for all the kids in the world. So I've done that, it's very fun, I go there many, many times. And I'm just not sure how that, you know, on a bigger scale with a whole team, is really going to help you move the work forward. And I would also echo, we've done so much of that. And part of the work that we did just to build us up to the retreat, to have us all come here that day, was around programmatic pros and cons. So I, I don't think it would be difficult for us to go back and revisit that conversation in sort of the encasement of the scenarios and the community values. So a little bit more of a frame than an all-out visioning that I'm happy to do any old time. But I just really want this to be useful to the community and also not ever come across as being at odds with what our towns and communities are.
And that's where my mind was going as you were asking the question, Sue, was, to some extent, we've, we've done that. In, as an admin team, we talked a lot about what we heard from the community, what we thought philosophically, from a programmatic perspective, made sense. And frankly, that's what created scenario two A and two B that were introduced at the retreat. We didn't, we didn't do that from a perspective of we have no constraints. We sort of acknowledged there were constraints and built that in. So your question was, can I see a way of connecting this visioning with the process? I struggle a little bit to see the connection from the visioning to the process without the constraints. Or maybe even worse, what I envisioned could end up steering the process and the conversation in a way that maybe it shouldn't be steered and creating significant controversy. Like if, if what we dream up looks exactly like one of these scenarios, what impact does that have on the process that we're involved in? I'm not sure. And what unintended consequences might that create? So those are, those are definitely some wonderings I have. Yeah, I guess that's where my thinking is.
That is, it's a good point. We did intentionally do the entire process to be community and then board-driven and not driven by administration, right? That was our bottom up.
Yeah.
And that was part of it, like I think that was, that's what I envisioned the retreat being, was I think it was, I thought it was, a lot of time, appropriately so, was invested in getting community voice. And there were definitely educators mixed into the community, but the focus was on community voice. And the retreat was an opportunity for the board to have, from an educational perspective, bringing its educational leaders to the table, understanding implications programmatically for kids. And to, to have the board really weigh community voice, financial realities, programmatic benefits, trade-offs, to position the board to understand how do we want to move this forward? Again, all under the umbrella of working within constraints we have. I feel like that happened. And I feel like two A and two B, so there were three scenarios that when we engaged in this process as, as an admin team, that made sense to us to study further. And those three scenarios were two A, two B, and seven, and they're three of the four that are here. So that's great. So I don't know what more... I don't know what more to bring. It would be an interesting exercise, dreaming bigger than what we've done. I don't know.
Sarah. How about just clarifying the benefits, you know, academically, like for these different scenarios? Like, I, I just, I think we're not, I think that that's the piece of it that we're sort of missing is like, why, what would make you choose? And I actually do, I think your opinion's valuable, like you're our leader. And I, what would make two A more appealing than two B academically, programmatically, meeting the needs of more kids or vice versa? Like where, I just, I guess I don't think there's enough meat in, or it needs to be, these benefits and trade-offs need to actually be based on a cost thing, based on an academic and a community values thing. That's its, in some ways, its own column.
And I guess to, to respond to that a little bit, I, I have been and, and as of right now, at least, planning to remain... I think there's risk in me saying, I think it ought to be this one.
Right.
In part, I want to, I want to know more about some of these before I say, I think it ought to be that one. I think that's part of, part of the reason we're studying. And I also recognize, so the average tenure of a superintendent is three years. This is way bigger than a three-year decision. This has to be something that has loads of community input. It has to be a community decision, because this is going to be a decision that way outlasts my time as superintendent. And I recognize the value as the educational leader in informing the decision. But I'm cautious about saying, I think it ought to be this one for lots of reasons. Not to, not the least of which being, some people already right now think I'm the one that gets to decide how this happens. Like, that's still true for some people, even though we know it's not the case. So I don't want to, I don't also want to feed into that belief that...
Allison.
Sorry, to make you stop quickly. So we have our framework, frame-work with the input from the admin team and the academic piece and the financial piece. And to expand on what Kristen was saying, when I brought up during the retreat, maybe the academic thing needs to be a parallel process, you know? The programming, so K through eight, what would that look like? From programming, academic, equity, classrooms, all that? What would that look like from that side of it? And as well as the financial side, so that we're not just looking at the financial side? So that both things can inform the ultimate decision. But like you said, the bottom up part. And we've talked to the community and they've given us their, their values. And then that guided how we looked in at all of the other stuff and then met together at the retreat. So for me, we keep circling around this. And this is here with the clarifying questions that we have, but this is pretty much where we're landing.
Kevin.
I, I still like the idea of the administration, Patrick and his team stepping back a little bit and not getting so bound up by what's, what is our current state, if you will, what, what we have today. And maybe listening to the conversation, maybe that's just the coalescing of all the thoughts that were put into the different scenarios and bring them out to a little bit of an abstract so that we can have a, just like, the status quo number one is going to be our golden, golden standard as to whether we're making progress or not as, as far as making things more financially secure or whatever. We've got this abstract that we can use as a gauge that the administration thinks is what needs to happen in this district to have successful students. And, and like I said, it could be Katrina's mountain campus or whatever, but maybe it's just pulling out all these little pieces and parts and saying, okay, this, this is that ball of wax. And, and as you develop your scenarios, it's just another sanity check against the facilities in scenario one as to if we're hitting our targets or not.
I would recommend that we have these scenarios studied and then whatever that stuff is goes on at the same time. It seems like, like people would like every aspect of scenario one, two A, two B, and seven to be looked at. And I think we should move ahead with that and again, knowing that the answers may lead us to other questions at other scenarios.
Is there a motion?
No, it's a suggestion. Sounded like a motion to me. That's how it's right now, right, right now.
I'd second that.
So, Kristen?
I would suggest...
Would you, would you consider a motion to direct the superintendent to enlist a consultant to study the four scenarios, one, two A, two B, seven, along with identifying the academic benefits?
Correct, that's a great way to put it.
Needed, let's see, needed to consider?
And if we could ask, knowing that the study may lead to more questions and other possible scenarios.
And I wonder perhaps if the motion's made, is there any language to this motion or is it a separate motion to involve some subcommittee of this board to be part of that process?
Let's do a different one, it's already kind of long.
I think, run on send. Yes. I think that's another action to establish that. And maybe that is something we could establish as we reorganize, because we're going to reorganize in less than a month. So we could establish at that time, that committee and appoint members to it. Because it's unlikely that there's going to be studies brought back. At this point, you're going to have to go out and figure out how to reach a consultant.
Yeah, it's months away.
Yeah.
Steve.
I also wonder, is motion, are we going to address the sub-scenarios that we discussed earlier? Seven at two and...
These are all under, under seven.
One at three.
Yeah, I think that they're covered on this sort of list that we're, that are there and then there are essential questions and...
Well, are we adding one point one for Kevin's note? Are we doing K through eight for seven with no high school and K through eight for joint papers?
Too many papers to make that.
I think possible modifications were covered in this, in these additional questions that were around some of them.
So we're just going to rely on the questions instead of modifying the scenarios?
I think that's what, when we looked at modifications, I think that we all came back to the four scenarios. Just more details was what our questions went around, would you, Sue?
When I was listening, I felt like what Kevin was suggesting about scenario one wasn't actually modifications to the scenario, but it was essential questions that he wanted to have answered in looking at that scenario, which I think you captured. I would say though, that there were some modifications to the fourth scenario, which is called scenario seven, which included looking at one K through eight school and high school choice. And then it sounded like the group also was interested in the possibility of continuing to operate all the elementary schools along with either high school choice or a partnership. So that was the specific modification that I thought I heard to the scenarios.
Is there another scenario that's just splitting the K through eight to elementary schools? Was that anything?
That was two B, point one, I think.
Okay. Two B and a choice, right, that's what that was. Two C, that was two C.
There, there had been a lot of discussion at the last meeting that the middle schoolers need to be all together in one place and not spread out because socially, I mean, at the table that I was at, there was a lot of academic discussion and discussion about that, that breaking up the middle schoolers to two separate places that were K through eight would be detrimental to the middle schooler. And we had several principals in our, at our table. So I don't, I don't, I didn't hear tonight that we were going to study that. I hadn't heard that previously. Did anyone else hear that? Okay, I didn't hear that either, so. But that keeping the middle schoolers together en masse in, in any of these situations would be preferable to thinning them out.
Sue, can I just have you say one more time to me the modifications you heard on seven?
I think I heard one modification was to study in addition to high school choice, the idea of high school partnership, potential partnerships. And the other modification I thought I heard was to also consider keeping elementary schools and not operating high school. I think I heard that one as well.
So it's kind of seven, eight, B and C.
Yep.
And can we add to the motion? So looking at the scenarios and taking into consideration the essential questions? Or is that in there already? Again, not a modification, but just more detail.
Okay. Done. I had one more amendment just for...
Don't call it amendment.
Sorry.
Don't call it amendment.
Before you say what the motion is,
Yes.
could we, around the language about directing Patrick, could we say, Patrick and a subset of the board to be determined? Wasn't that motion to separate C? I mean, in that, in that way, I don't think... What about your letter C that you added to the agenda?
Well, that's specifically around the community engagement committee.
Okay.
But I'm not...
Okay. All I was just wondering is I just want it to be clear that we're making that direction that we're, the way it reads right now is that Patrick's being directed to do this. But we're saying, but we're, he's not going to do it on his own. So, and that's not reflected in the motion as it reads. Right, because I think the motion is speaking to sort of the enlistment of the consultant and the direction Patrick is to use to get that consultant. And we would not be in a position to go out and meet consultants and hire them since we've delegated that responsibility to Patrick through our executive limitations and our, our policy. Our policy doesn't say the board gets to go out and choose consultants that they're going to work with, with the exception of through monitoring reports and using an outside consultant or outside third party as a... So I think we're, I think we're taking on a responsibility that isn't ours to take on in that way. But I think we could have a board committee to work with the information when it's there. Because I think there are certain rules that have to be abided by to go out and get a consultant because of the, I mean, it can't just be added into the budget because it's above a certain amount. So there's going to be rules that have to be followed to have that be done.
But the plan is to, at the next meeting, create the committee that will be included. And this isn't just when we get the information, it's the back and forth that Patrick spoke about earlier.
Right.
That those people would be in... That those people would be involved in that back and forth after the consultant is hired. So is that what you said, that at the next meeting, when we reorganize, that, that committee would be formed?
Right.
That's sort of the way I would see it.
I wonder if, and I hear what you're saying, Dawn, the difference between the selection of, of a contractor, some support in some way, and working with a subcommittee or a subgroup of this board with said contractor. Is there a way to put those into a motion? Direct Patrick to secure a contractor to engage with this study and work with a subset of this board. And I think if we call it a subset, that leaves open, could be a formal subcommittee, it could be a couple of volunteers. It gives them latitude for whatever direction the board wants to go in. So directing me to secure this consultant and work with a subset of this board and the consultant to study the scenarios as presented with additional essential questions, maybe? That's the right language? Or as modified for your notes on all of your papers?
Agreed.
So those might be two motions or they might be one?
Yeah, let me see if I can figure out a way to get them into one.
And is, I mean, I also, just is there a way to include community members in that? Is it just subset, subset, is that just the board? I mean, what if we have a really talented community member that, you know, and maybe that's a total, maybe that's after you've hired the contractor, maybe that's a different piece. But as long as we leave it open, not only to how we want to engage with that work, but how the community wants to.
Now, we could, we could simply make a motion to put, making a subcommittee on our future agenda. That would put it in the record and we were talking about it, considering it, but we wouldn't have to actually do it tonight.
We could, and then we could, in the, in the charge, so if we're going to have a committee, it would have a charge. So in the charge, we could describe the duties to work with the superintendent and then a facilities consultant, study, whatever, to do, to do. We could, in the charge, direct it if it's going to be a board established. And then that, then that says that it's the board, subcommittee and superintendent and the consultant all working together to go back. So we could do that in the charge.
And if it's an official subcommittee of the board with a charge, it would have to behave as though it were the board in terms of open law, et cetera.
Thanks. It's not my idea.
And I also just wanted to echo what Liz said. I think that you all just had a really positive experience with the community engagement committee of the board that had board members and community members. And so I think it would fit with the spirit of where you've been to continue that with having a way for some community members to participate on that.
I don't see it really operating much differently than the rental committee, maybe just the infrastructure.
And you can define the makeup of.
Community volunteers.
The committee however you want.
Of the makeup, but it's committed in the charge.
And you can run the meeting.
So we're going to do that part at the next meeting.
Run the meeting with less formality than we do?
Well, not, yeah.
I mean, you have to follow up a meeting law, but you don't have to run Robert's rule.
And you were talking about maybe designing the charge and the committee's structure and then actually appointing people to the committee at the reorganization meeting in March.
Right.
So the, the committee wouldn't be formed until March. Which means April is when we would begin conversations with the consultant, which changes our timeline. By three months? We had sort of allotted for a six-month window for this study, which was three to six months is, is what we were advised it would take to conduct a study. So this squeezes it much more to the three-month window. If we're looking for the summer retreat to be when we might have a report to review. Just sort of the timeline that we laid out.
Well, there isn't anything in, sorry, Dawn, there isn't anything in the motion to preclude you as superintendent from starting to do some of the work and find a consultant? Or are we talking about the community engagement committee plus the charge to help inform you? Okay, so then, then you can.
We could select a consultant soon, but the first conversation we were explaining to the consultant what we're looking to have studied wouldn't begin until April. Because our reorganization meeting is on March 31st.
No, no, we're going to have to do it two weeks after town. Remember, we have to do a meeting in two weeks.
Right, the March board meeting.
So 16th of the latest.
Yeah, so we said, we're going to, within two weeks, we're going to have the reorganization meeting, have a little time for an ends discussion, but maybe we are going to have to tailor it to cover some other work that needs to happen first.
It is a 17th.
Did we kind of come up with what you want to ask them to study tonight? Is that what we did tonight? And then some people are jumping in down the room a little bit. That's okay. To maybe not, to make it.
We have our framework.
The most meaningful and.
Plus the additional questions.
As much time as possible for that. Yeah, if ever, if maybe you could.
My sense is it will take more than me handing you a piece of paper like this to someone and saying, can you study this for us? And that's either me having a conversation without the subcommittee or it's me having that conversation with a subcommittee.
Well, just in order to get professional services, you're going to have to hand them something.
Yep.
So if you're in charge of getting them, it's going to be that piece of paper and the questions. And that's going to be the starting point. And they could probably build their own questions from that quest to come back to the group. They could start building their framework on their own.
Yep.
Before we sit down with them and whenever our first meeting might be.
Oh, it's the 18th.
As a matter of fact, they should be coming to a meeting with some questions.
I feel like I was hearing Steve volunteer for this.
I'm just thinking if you hired, I would have to get ready for that.
You can do it for free by being a volunteer.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to stay there pretty soon.
I want to be quiet.
All right, so here's what I think I've gotten down for. It would be a motion to direct the superintendent to enlist a consultant to study the four scenarios. Scenario one, scenario two A, scenario two B, and scenario seven would need the modifications of one being the high school choice and high school partnership, both of those options. Modification two, keep the elementary schools, no high school. To identify academic benefits needed to consider the scenarios by looking at the scenarios and essential questions. All this knowing full well that the study may lead to other questions or scenarios.
Yes.
Does that, did I capture it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there someone? Andrew, second. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Good job. Any further discussion?
Good job, Dawn.
Yeah. All right. Oh, Kevin?
I hate to say this because this, this shouldn't be brought up, but what is the process for hiring a consultant? Is it something that you go out and get multiple?
Can we hold that pot and finish?
That's the means. So we're doing, we're doing the ends right now. Where we're going to buy our toilet paper. And one thing that was when we, someone's talking about means, we'd always say that. And who wants to go trace out toilet paper?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll bring it to you, Chris, if you can get it. All right, any other comment? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
It's probably a month's kind of work, like several months. So there wouldn't be a February board meeting where I would report back. And unlikely that it would be a March board meeting where I would report back. But at some point, that will.
So that was the piece about identifying the academic benefits where?
That was the dream big and have no constraints.
No, that was after that. That was, can you, can you look at the four scenarios and tell us the academic benefits and challenges in the four scenarios? Can you draw?
I think that's leading to my confusion. I'm not sure, am I dreaming big with no constraints? Or are we talking pros and cons academically, given the four scenarios?
Yes, that's the way I unders.
That's the way we even understood it. Couple of your amendments, so that's.
Right.
Okay. So that's what that, identify the academic benefits in the scenarios.
So if we could have a motion that says that, that's then recorded at the minute. So when I bring that back, it's clear that I am compliant with the board's request. That would be helpful. Because what we think we remember in a month and a half may be different than what we're seeing right now.
Even in a week.
It was in the, it was in the last one, right. Do you want to, do you want a motion that identifies what? Yeah, yes. Chris has it, but to identify the academic benefits in the scenarios.
Okay, as.
We have that already.
Let's see what.
Separate from.
Identify academic, academic benefits needed to consider the scenarios by looking at scenarios and the questions.
Okay.
That, that's how, that's how I took what they, what I was hearing. Not the big dream anymore. That one's gone. Can't have that, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Or visit Katrina's school at another date.
Right.
Bring aspects of it.
All right, so I know we're past, we were supposed to stop at eight. It was, can we go for a little bit longer just to finish up? The, the action item I asked to be put on was to give direction to the community engagement committee. And I had two specific questions that I wanted to ask you about this direction. And the first one was already brought up about how do we hear from the voices that are not in the room? That would be some really good information for us to have some ideas about how to reach that, those voices. Because we have not heard from a large percentage of people. So that was one I had to, and then the other one was how do we activate or leverage or get that energy that is there in the community and get it, use it some way to help us along? And I'm thinking that the community engagement could dig around a little more, do a little more research, come back and give us some recommendations about things that we could probably be starting or doing, just sort of give us some direction. So that's why I asked for that to be added, just to use the time to connect back, to get some things addressed that we need to have addressed.
That's great. So do you need a motion?
I do.
How about I try and then see if this answers.
Move to.
Are you sure you don't want to?
I make a motion to ask the community engagement committee to reconvene and look at both how we continue efforts to reach the other 95% and how we can continue to harness the community energy that came out of our engagement work, particularly around topics that might be part of this process, like advocacy with the legislature, public-private partnerships. There were a couple of areas.
Stuff that's out there that's beyond the board's charge.
Okay, Krista made that motion? Liz, are you second? Any discussion?
Was the community engagement committee terminated?
No.
You say reconvene, it's.
Yeah, just more just like, you know, stating that. Yeah, just those loose ends that I think this process might not fully address at the board table that, that group, I think, has the opportunity to think about more deeply.
All right. Really? All right, all those in favor of asking the community engagement committee to reconvene and look at how we can continue efforts to reach the 90% or the voices that are not heard in this room and to continue to harness the energy of the community through the advocating legislature or legislature or public partnership?
Ooh, if we're going to have legislature in there, we should have our select board. I feel like that was a huge thing that's come up. Should we, or should we change it to be more broad?
Yep.
Harnessing, harnessing energy in the community around topics related to this work. And we can talk in the committee about what those are. Some really good.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. I did one last shout out if there's any public comment. Okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
I do.
Andrew and Sarah. All those in favor of adjourning at 8:39, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?